Good evening and welcome to the Monday, excuse me, June 9th, 2014 Washougal City Council Meeting. Would you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Rose, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Boger?
Here.
Councilmember Greenly?
Here.
Councilmember Lindsey?
Here.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Here.
Councilmember Schumaker?
Here.
Councilmember Freeman?
Here.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening?
Amendments to the agenda?
Oh, yes. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, based on the fact that last week we had a very informative presentation from C-TRAN and the staff, and we haven't had the other side of the issue presented, with us tonight is County Commissioner David Medor, who has offered to make such a presentation. I would like to amend the agenda to add just before the agenda item C, move that to D and make C the type of discussion that we had last week with the back and forth.
Second, you don't want to make it just part of the discussion in regards to bus rapid transit?
As long as it comes first, great. I was trying to preserve the council's right to, or opportunity to discuss that among themselves without interruption after the discussion with Mr. Medor.
Totally up to you all how it happens that...
That would be my preference also.
Have them separate.
Do we need to take a formal vote?
No, never do. Are there any other amendments to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, are there any members of the public that would like to address council?
Thank you, hostess lady.
This is one of two opportunities you have. There'll be another one before the end of the meeting as well. Come on up if you'd come up to the microphone and give us your name and address.
My name is Rex McNue and I live at 8578 Street, Washougal, Washington. And first I'd like to start by pardoning my attire. I had to race from the gym, so just barely made it. I actually have two issues. One, I want to make sure I discuss in private with the mayor, and congratulations on winning.
Yes, thank you. I got your message earlier today, but I haven't had a chance to give you a call back.
That's okay. Everyone is busy and I respect everyone for what they do. I was here quite a while back for an issue that I had with a drag strip on 8th Street between 6th and 9th, and I haven't been back since because of health issues, and I am now back again. I'm feeling better. So it's between 6th Street, or 6th and 9th Street on, and it's H. There's the new road that they installed that's probably, I think Will said is probably about as nice as one-third of the streets in this town. It's almost as big as the main drag. And I went and talked to Will just a little while back. He installed the speeding sign out in front on the street. He put it right in front of my house, which is, it was facing the east, and that's about three houses down from the corner, so it really didn't pick up much speeding traffic. And since I seem to be the only one on the street that has been speaking much, but that's seen me to change recently, so I had people come to me and complain why they put it there, and I asked him, and he said it's because they put it where the person who complains can see the light blink, which I didn't care. But they left it there a week, and they moved it down to the other end of the street, so now it's down at the west end of the street, almost towards the end. I think it's going to be there for a week too, but I've been, brought this up with council again. I'm going to bring it one more time, and I'm going to keep coming because somebody is going to get hurt on that street. I ride my bicycle all over this town. I know where the speed spots are. I do not ride on that street pass Safeway, no way. That's really dangerous out there, but they use it as a drag strip and they do not care. Obviously, the police department, there's no way the police department can sit out there for hours. I know that they don't have the manpower, but I've been recommending speed bumps, and I'm here to recommend that again. And if it's any consolation, as I said in my chair at 10:30 last night, I watched a guy come by my house. If he was doing any less than 80, I would have been shocked. He hit his brakes in front of my mailbox. He proceeded, I knew he wasn't going to make the corner. He didn't make, he actually made the corner, but on two wheels, and then he jackknifed and went back and wiped out Earl's brand-new Corvette, rather than going straight through the house where the concrete barriers are and going over the top and taking out Lynn and Sharon again, which they've already had a car totaled in front of that house. So that guy was the lion. So they do that all the time, and there's really nothing that can stop them. I think a lot of it has to do with the design of the street. It's the perfect drag strip. And when I was a kid, I would have been racing down it, but unfortunately, I'm not a kid anymore.
I remember 8th Street back then. It wasn't good to race on.
No.
It is now, but not then.
I've been here 13 years. It was a gravel road. I have to say, it was a lot faster then, but in that neighborhood, there's a lot of apartments, there's a lot of low income, and there's a lot of children, including two of them, right, a lady that came with me. And there was a couple other ladies that wanted to come too, but I said, you know, just take it slow. City council's got a lot. I don't think it would be really expensive because they built it so that you have, like, pushouts for the landscaping.
Pumpouts.
So, but it has gotten to the point where if you were sitting there, you would be amazed. So, let me see, please.
I'm a little hard of hearing.
I'm really hard of hearing. Go ahead.
Where exactly?
It's between 6th and 9th on 8th Street. It's on this H.
As in hotel.
As in hotel. Oh, as in help. Help us. Yes. They start at one end and they go to the other, and it is insane how crazy they get. And three more race track drivers just moved in there, but luckily she knew how to handle that one, so she got that slowed down. But like I say, I was sitting there 10:30 last night. I saw his lights and his brakes, and he had to have been doing at least 80 because he couldn't stop the car, so anyway.
Well, Rex, I will get back to you tomorrow on the other issue, and then let me see if Will can't find somewhere mid-block to be able to put that speed trailer and collect the data off of it.
Yeah, and I don't know how well the data's going to be because it sat for a week, pointed the same direction towards the east at the end where they didn't have time to accelerate. So now they know it's there, so it's going to affect what kind of readings you're going to get, but I would say the average speed on that street is between 45 and 50, and if you have children, I would not recommend walking across it.
Yeah, they can even turn off the digital on there, so it just sits there and doesn't flash anything and records the data coming through, so.
Well, that'll help, and it ends up staying another week or something, but you know, it won't matter whether you record it or not. What it actually does, somebody, I'm sorry, somebody's going to get hurt on there and it's going to be a child. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Rex.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to address council? Yes, ma'am. Come on up. Good evening.
My name is Breon Chick. I live at 831 8th Street, and I was also coming up to talk to you about the speeding. It's getting kind of crazy, and it's kind of scary when you're driving with kids. I was going 25, and they don't even care. They'll just fly around you and keep going. I've followed them. I know where a couple of them live. I was told I'm not supposed to do that, but I just want it kind of controlled, and I don't know what to do at this point. I have two teenagers that walk up and down all the time, and it's getting a little out of hand.
Let's see if we can get some more relief out there.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you. Anyone else that would like to comment to council? Okay, not your only opportunity. There will be another one before the end of the meeting as well. Moves this to the consent agenda tonight. There are six items on your consent agenda, council. Your workshop minutes of June 9th, 2014, your regular council minutes of June 9th, your regular accounts payable claims in the amount of $561,337.15, your payroll claims in the amount of $448,594.57, Agenda Bill 41-14, an award of bid and authorization for the mayor to sign a professional services agreement with Midnight Janitorial Services for 2014 janitorial services, and Agenda Bill 42-14, an authorization for the mayor to sign an intergovernmental agreement with Clark County regarding community development, block grant, and home investment partnership programs. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we approve Consent Agenda Items A, B, C, D, and F, and that we move item E to New Business.
Hearing no objection, those items are approved.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
In addition, would you pull Agenda Item Foxtrot for discussion?
Are there any more items you'd like off of consent?
I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear that.
Items E and F are moved off of the consent agenda. Are there any other items from council?
No.
Paul, would you like to amend your motion for unanimous approval of items A, B, C, and D?
Correct.
Any objection? So ordered. Moving to Agenda Bill 41-14, an award of bid and authorization for the mayor to sign professional services agreement with Midnight Janitorial. David?
Thank you, Mayor, council. As Trevor explained at the workshop, we received a notice of cancellation from our current provider. He gave us the required notice under the current contract. We went out for bid for a new provider. We received one bid relatively comparable to the existing cost that we had, about $300 more per month. And the recommended action tonight is to authorize the mayor to sign the contract documents with Midnight Janitorial for the duration of 2014 janitorial services.
Thank you, David. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we award the contract for 2014 janitorial services to Midnight Janitorial and authorize the mayor to sign the contract documents.
Second.
Second.
I've got a motion, a second, to authorize and award the contract for janitorial services. Counsel, discussion?
I want to observe that this was workshopped for the first time this evening and is now, was now on the consent agenda. I would, I'm very uncomfortable with that. On the other hand, I do understand that given that we only had 60 days' notice from our previous supplier and the time requirements involved in public bidding, that we are very much under the gun here. Our 60 days are up. And so I will vote in favor of this, but I, other than that, if it were not that kind of emergency, I would have a problem with it moving so quickly.
Any other counsel discussion? I've got a motion, a second, to award the contract for 2014 janitorial services to Midnight Janitorial and authorize the mayor to sign the contract documents. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Takes us to Agenda Bill 42-14, an update to ongoing intergovernmental agreements with Clark County regarding the community development, block grant, and home investment partnerships program. David?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Before you this evening is an intergovernmental agreement with Clark County and the other cities in Clark County that have been participating in the CDBG program over the years. We entered into an agreement with respect to these programs in 1997 and have been operating under that agreement since 1997. The federal government, through its Department of Housing and Urban Development, is requiring that these intergovernmental agreements have some changes made to them. There are four paragraphs, N, O, P, and V, which have some language changes. In paragraphs N, O, and P, there are no substantive changes at all. It is just clarifying language, but the federal government says it has to be done, so it will be done. Paragraph V is a brand-new requirement that applies to the program due to some new laws passed by Congress. So this is essentially a housekeeping item, if you would, so that we can continue to participate in our partnership that we have with Clark County that we enjoy and where we have been successful in our CDBG applications. And for us to continue to participate, we need to sign this intergovernmental agreement with the county as do all the other cities that participate in the program. So the recommended action is to authorize the mayor to sign the intergovernmental agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the intergovernmental agreement with Clark County regarding community development, block grant, and home investment partnership program.
Second. I've got a motion and a second to authorize the mayor to sign the intergovernmental agreement with Clark County and other cities in Clark County. Counsel, discussion? David?
I think I just got my question answered. This is essentially the same program we've been operating under. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? I've got a motion, a second, to authorize the mayor to sign the intergovernmental agreement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Brings us to Agenda Bill 43-14, a resolution in support of PSU waterfront vision plan for Parker's Landing. Dave, you're going to get all these tonight.
I have them all. Thank you, Mayor, council. As we discussed at the work session earlier today, we have a resolution before you that was previously reviewed and approved by our partners at the port, the Port Commission. It is a document that acknowledges the work of the Portland State students on the waterfront vision plan and acknowledges that document and points to it as a guide and a tool at a very high level for us as we continue to work on the waterfront project with our partner, the port. The recommended action tonight is to read the resolution by title only and then to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner. And just before I turn it back to the mayor, I just wanted to acknowledge that we have, it looks like we have two of the students that were on the team here, so thank you for being here this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we read the resolution by title only.
I think if the council will indulge, rather than just have it read by the title, especially with the students here, and this is a formal, if you would, memorialization of the work that they did, I just assume that we read the resolution in total.
Fine with me.
Don, would you like to go at it?
I would be happy to do that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
A resolution endorsing the Portland State University Students Waterfront Vision Plan, the result of the students' project entitled "Washougal Waterfront: A Community Connected Regarding the Port Waterfront Development to Be Known as Parker's Landing," whereas the Port of Camas-Washougal initiated and the city of Washougal partnered with them for the development of waterfront vision plan for the Washougal-Camas communities, and whereas the port and the city applied for and were successful in receiving planning assistance from the Portland State Tulane School of Master of Urban and Regional Planning for the development of a vision plan, and whereas, under the name of Convergence Community Planning, six master of urban and regional planning students worked with the port and city for the, with the purpose to develop a community vision for the waterfront that connects and complements the burgeoning downtown and supports the creation of a local and regional identity for the city of Washougal, and whereas the waterfront vision plan was founded on the understanding of existing community conditions, lessons from other waterfront communities, and extensive community engagement that was a central priority for convergence community planning, and whereas the Port Commissioners and the Washougal City Council recognized the waterfront vision plan and community generation, generated high-level concept guide for future planning and development on the waterfront, and whereas the Port Commissioners and the Washougal City Council further recognize that the waterfront vision plan will be an important tool in the development and implementation of the Port of Camas-Washougal and the city of Washougal's long-range plans for the community revitalization. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Port of Camas-Washougal Commissioners and the City Council for the city of Washougal, Washington as follows. We resolve to recognize Parker's Landing and the waterfront vision plan as the community's aspiration for the future development of the waterfront. We resolve to use the waterfront vision plan as a guide and reference as we review long-range policies, plans, and strategies to promote consistency that align with the plan's stated recommendations. We resolve to acknowledge that the waterfront vision plan is a living document that requires recurring updates and planned revision opportunities. Further, we resolve to continue to partner together in working with the community for the success of the waterfront vision plan, passed by the Commissioners of the Port of Camas-Washougal at a regular meeting on the third day of June 2014, passed by the Council of the city of Washougal at regular meeting on the ninth day of June 2014.
Thank you, Don.
Mr. Mayor, I move we pass and post the resolution in the usual manner.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner. Any counsel discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Gentlemen, thank you again for all your work.
Bravo.
Appreciate it.
Good job.
[applause]
I want to know what day graduation is.
Miss credit.
Job, job well done.
And you anticipate graduation?
Congratulations.
Just a question.
Were you graded on the plan?
You better have got an A.
It's marvelous. Thank you.
Thank you again. With that, it takes us to Agenda Bill 44-14, New Market Tax Credit Project Phase Two Authorization. Dave?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Also, as we discussed at our work session earlier today, in April, you approved a professional services agreement between the cities of Washougal and Camas and the Port of Camas-Washougal and Queda for a three-phase project that would implement a new program, the new market tax credit program. It is a three-phased project, and as you'll recall, it was very important for the council that you have the ability to review the progress on the project at two key points, between the completion of Phase 1, which was a feasibility analysis, and then again later at the conclusion of Phase 2. So we conducted that during the work session, and the action that's before you this evening is for you to exercise the prerogative you have in terms of advancing the project to the next phase, and so the recommended action is for the council to authorize the commencement of Phase 2 of the professional services agreement between Queda and the city of Washougal, the city of Camas, and the Port of Camas-Washougal.
Thank you, Dave. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize the commencement of Phase 2, the professional services agreement between Queda, the city of Washougal, the city of Camas, and the Port of Camas-Washougal.
Second. I've got a motion and a second to authorize the commencement of Phase 2. Any counsel discussion?
Yeah.
Paul?
I think Connie Jo raised a valid point as to why we would workshop this on the same night that we're going to vote on it, especially given that the packet wasn't available until well into Friday afternoon. That was kind of part of the agreement about going to two meetings a week.
Yes, that's understood. We are fronting this at the request of Queda. It's a fast-moving project. The report was out in draft form at the beginning of last week, and that's how quickly this project is working. But I, we fully understand that it's a departure from expectations in that regard, but I think timing is critical and of the essence, and we agreed to put it on the agenda.
That said, I'd basically like to create the opportunity for the rest of council to weigh in on it in the following way. I move to table the resolution until, for two weeks, until the meeting, the next meeting.
I'm going to ask the question. It's rhetorical. You're not kidding.
No.
If council members will remember those that were here when we went to two meetings a month, it is certainly the intent of both the council and the administration not to bring these things to you in quick fashion. There was no guarantee. Matter of fact, I believe we said whenever it was practical, we would make sure to not do that, both in this item and the previous item in regards to the janitorial portion of it, of the janitorial contract, and as we talked about in our work session prior to this meeting, there are certain things that timer of the essence. If you all want to hold this up, I believe the port and the city of Camas sincerely are getting close to being at an end with this city council. If we want to go there and we want to put the brakes on this, they are going to continue without you. They will not do that happily because they view you as very good friends and partners, and we have worked unbelievably hard and with many hours for the last six years to replace both of those relationships that were basically destroyed. If you really, really want to table this, then you need to table it. I believe that the reaction that that is going to bring is not going to be favorable to this community. Council members have asked for a number of years when this town is going to catch some brakes and start getting ahead, and we have been bringing you things that will help us get there. Otherwise, we would not be fronting this under anybody's circumstances. City of Camas is in this wholeheartedly for their own reasons, and they have the tiniest amount to gain by this. Brent?
What are the ramifications of tabling this for two weeks as far as time crunches on the...
I think the ultimate ramification is it makes it possible that we wouldn't be able to package up solid applications for, and Phase 3 ultimately. Phase 2 is the lion's share of creating the organization and getting the, everything in place so that you can apply, and then we have to come back again for your approval to move from Phase 2 to Phase 3, and that's when the actual application is submitted. So Phase 2 is to create the entity and get that all in place. It's very complex. Then Phase 3 is the actual applications. I would suspect that it puts in jeopardy our ability to meet those deadlines.
Those would be the deadlines for the city of Washougal. The city of Camas and the Port Commission are prepared to put monies forward to backfill our investment, and they will move forward. They've already had that discussion.
Well, I, you know, I appreciate Councilmember Greenly's concern about workshop and then having on the same, having the action item on the same night, but I think we have, we've had the unfortunate circumstance of having two of these come up at the same time, and I think it would probably be a little better if you wanted to make a point about it to table the janitorial contract, because I think that has less of an impact on where this community's going, but I just, you know, we have to understand, and I'm not going to support the motion to table.
Dave?
Go ahead.
Dave?
There's no second. I'm not sure why we're discussing.
There is a second.
Who's second?
Brent. No, I didn't. I didn't second it.
Brent did not second.
Oh, for the tabling? I'm sorry. Well, actually, hang on. Other than my comments, I shouldn't have allowed other comments out there. A motion to table is not up for discussion. I've got a motion to table the item. Is there a second?
I will second to hear the discussion.
We can't, it's not... There is no discussion.
Well, then, do you want to remove that?
I, I'm sorry.
Draw that.
We were looking for a second so we could have the discussion. Can't wait.
No. I'm looking for a second for the table. There is no discussion on a tabling of the item.
Let it fail for lack of a second. We can then have the discussion. We could then introduce a second motion to table.
I withdraw my second.
Okay. Is there a second to Paul's motion to table? Hearing no second, I have a motion and a second on the floor to authorize the commencement of Phase 2. Other counsel discussion? Dave?
Yes, thank you. I, I'm not in favor of this for two reasons. First one is that Sowita's brought us, everything that Sowita's brought us has always been a rush, rush, rush job. It has to be done now. There may be some reason for that this time. I'm not sure how valid it is. It's not been valid in the past. The second thing is, as much as I would like to see economic development in the city of Washougal and in this region generally, I'm not sure that this is the vehicle that's going to accomplish that. And I've held forth on that any number of times, and I won't bore everybody tonight. But for that reason, I can't vote to authorize this. And, Mr. Mayor, I understand your comments and your concerns.
Just a concern for the community. Connie Jo?
Nope. My question was resolved.
Joyce?
I see no reason to table this and extend it out for two weeks. I don't think that would change any vote that we all have, and there was nothing that was presented to me this evening that would suggest that we don't go ahead with Phase 2. They have realistic projects on the table that make a difference in our community, both at the port and Washougal, basically Washougal from where I'm thinking, but Camas also. So I, while I opposed this in the beginning, I'm willing to see them go on to another phase.
Any other discussion? I've got a motion and a second to authorize the commencement of Phase 2 of the professional services agreement between Queda, the city of Washougal, the city of Camas, and the Port of Camas-Washougal. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you. Brings us to item C. Commissioner Medor? I assume that the floor is yours.
Thank you. I have some handouts here. I'm sorry.
Counselors here.
Councilman, please. Thank you. Would you like me to sit?
Just at the rochera would be fine. Thank you.
Watch your feet.
Thanks.
It's probably the school bus driver in me. Stop!
First of all, I love two-way conversations and scrutiny and, actually, let me get my So if I say anything that you feel like, oh, like people are to question that, by all means, please enter into a two-way conversation. That's going to do us all real good. First of all, I'm really pleased that I happened to run into a, one, a, Mark Rohr back here. He's a C-Van driver, and I'm a big fan of C-Van. My father-in-law used to ride C-Van for four years while he went back and forth between our home and dialysis. Certainly, the role of, of public transit is critically important for our community. We absolutely need to provide those services for those individuals who need that service, and that includes the C-Van service as well as bus service. The question is, how can we be really good stewards to make sure that we can provide that service the most cost-effective way? I've got just simply three different documents. All three of them came from C-Trans. And what I'd like to be able to do is just bring up the first one, it's called Map Four, that one right there. This is the, let's see, let me, let me do this. It's, this is the one that it goes across. Get my glasses. Good. Goes across the bridge, and I'd like to be able to point out on the left side of the screen, downtown Vancouver, where you see the number three, the rectangle there on the left, that's the breakpoint where we used to have a, two loops. The loop that went across between that point and the bottom of the screen, which is across into Portland, in 2007 and earlier, that loop used to be run, I'll call that Loop A, that used to be run by Trimat. If you go from that same point to the top right of the screen, actually, let me see this here. Yes, that's a Vancouver Mall. That's Loop B. It used to be that we'd have Loop A and Loop B running in parallel. But something happened in 2007. Basic decision was made to change that. What happened is that the number four bus, which runs that loop now, would, would go back and forth between loop, just simply, Loop A would just simply go back and forth, and that would provide reliable, on-time, frequent, low-cost service to the citizens, the riders along that route. In 2007, that Loop B across the river went away, and the fourth plane route got serialized, so that Loop A then needed to go across into Portland, run Loop B, come back across the bridge, and then go across again and continue what would normally be Loop A. You would think that if a fundamental decision like that was made, there would be some kind of evaluation to say, how well did that work? Well, it was 2007, and that was seven years ago now when it was switched. Sometime between now and then, I would think that it would have been just good business to go look at what results came from that. Well, we do have a problem, and that is, the fourth plane corridor is unreliable. We have buses that are running behind schedules, sometimes way behind the schedules, and when that happens, the riders along fourth plane stack up. We get more and more people at bus stops that would normally be fewer, and then finally, when the bus arrives, because it was tied up in Portland traffic or because of bridge lift or something like that, we end up with frustrated riders, we end up with overcrowded buses, just for those first few buses that arrive. So the problem is that fourth plane is now affected by the congestion and by the bridge lifts that happen on Loop B unnecessarily. The natural thing would be to just continue the reliable Loop A and a Loop B. It would be a simple, low cost, in fact, it would be zero cost, and it would save us substantial money. Now, we wouldn't have to build anything new. It would actually save us substantial money now on operations, and we have ample buses. C-Trans has an additional 17 buses sitting in the C-Trans parking lot during peak time that are available. C-Trans also has 14 hybrid buses that, that run throughout the system that can potentially solve the problems along fourth plane much better. So first of all, I'd like to acknowledge that, yes, we absolutely do have a problem on fourth plane with the number four bus, but that problem was the result of a decision that was made in 2007 that has not been corrected. So with that, I'd like to be able to take a breath and just simply allow for questions or feedback from where I'm at so far.
I think you're good. Oh, Paul?
Quick question. If you're running a fleet of buses or any vehicles where you're in a must-serv situation, you need to have a certain number of spares because you will have breakdowns. Is that what those 17 buses are for, or are they, do they have other spares? What?
Absolutely, there is a requirement to have spares so that if something happens, you can bring those spares into service and make sure those are, those needs are met. This plan adds 10 new Bus Rapid Transit buses, which is super buses articulated, and adds to that number.
And, I, I, I'm not sure, I'm maybe a little slow here. I don't quite understand what you're proposing.
I'm just backing into the, just laying out the, the problem that we have to face, and then we'll walk through the, the steps to solve that problem.
But basically, what you're saying is that we, basically, we need to separate the Oregon leg, make that an independent route from the fourth plane leg.
Well.
So that people would change buses from one to the other?
That's the way it used to be before we, in other words, we used to run two loops. Trimat ran, ran the Loop B and.
There were 14 buses, I think it was, yeah.
And I, actually, I don't know what bus number that was, but it used to be run by two loops, and when that happened, we don't have, we didn't have the problem that we do now. Something happened, negative consequences when that decision was made. So anytime you have a problem, there is a, there are alternatives that would need to be presented that are viable alternatives, that are natural, solve the problem kind of more practical ways, alternatives. And the idea of breaking this into two loops using existing resources was not one of them.
But, but that's, maybe I misunderstood. I thought that's what you were proposing.
Actually, I am, but the process of getting to a locally preferred alternative, the NEPA process requires us to go through and evaluate viable alternatives. This one should have been included in that. It was not. A variation, a more expensive variation was, but this one was not.
Excuse me. Is this meaning that they, someone that wanted to go from Vancouver Mall to Jansen Beach would change buses there in the, in the three inset there?
Yes, and anything that I say, we want to make sure that we, in fact, I'm glad to see Scott Patterson here from C-Trans because he knows this system and he, he knows what's being proposed. He's been through the locally preferred alternative, and I, and I invite you to raise your hand, and if I say anything that's not right, by all means, point it out, and we want to make sure that. I stand up to scrutiny here. So if I get anything wrong, speak up, please. Have I said anything wrong yet?
No, I mean, I can give context to certain things, but.
Okay. All right. Catch me if I make a mistake, okay?
I think we're ready for the solution. Okay.
Okay. All right. First of all, to understand the problem, yes, we do have a problem. Why didn't we solve that problem years ago? Why didn't we recognize that problem in 2007 as soon as it happened? 2008, nine, 10? It appears that the, if C-Trans was a private business, you want to make sure your customers are successful, and you would, first thing you would do is, if you make a change, make sure you do more good than harm, not the other way around. So that's the history. There's a longer history of C-Trans, and it is the, back in 1998, the, and that's 15 years ago, C-Trans was moving more passengers then than we are today. 15 years, and we've gone backwards, and the ridership system-wide for C-Trans. Why is that? The most dominant reason, and that's a standard for the industry, everybody knows this, that's in, in the industry, is when you raise fares, you cut ridership. Because what we're doing is we're providing a lower-cost alternative for those that can evaluate whether or not it's, it's a less, it's a more affordable system, and we're also providing service for those that actually need it. Why have we been raising fares? In fact, at the last C-Trans board meeting, just last month, we raised fares again for the seventh year in a row, and the plan is to continue to raise fares every single year, and every year we cut ridership because we do that. I want to make sure that, that we understand the long-term success of a transit system is to serve the most people with the least costs, to them and to the community. We aren't really succeeding in that because our, the cost for a C-Trans service now is about three and a half times or more than it was in 1998, and yes, yet we're moving less riders. So the reason that we raised fares last month is because even though we have more cash reserves than we've ever had in our history, that cash reserve is, is going to be eaten, consumed by this project. And we want to be financially sound, we want to be financially conservative. When we eat those, those reserves, you have to be sure that you don't put yourself in a precarious position. So you raise fares even though, even though you don't need to, even though it's going to be hurting your ridership. That's the reasoning that went on behind this. And the, actually, the justification was, if we raise fares, if we do harm a little bit at a time, it's better than doing harm a big step at a time. Well, I submit that it would be better not to do harm at all. We could actually lower fares and increase ridership because the cost for C-Trans to drive a full bus is the same as an empty bus. It would be so much better to, that we, that riders would use these buses. The biggest problem that C-Trans has is lack of ridership. I would love to be able to see us find a better way to solve this problem without consuming our local cash reserves in order to do it. Context. It wasn't very long ago that we had a major project, the CRC project. This was the, there was a terminus, there's a, a major connection between Portland and downtown Vancouver. That was the light rail station. At that point, to justify that, C-Trans, being one of the signatory agencies, signed on that 10,400 people per day would be riding transit, riding that light rail across between downtown Vancouver and Portland. 10,400 a day. Many of those riders were to come from either people walking in downtown Vancouver, well, we don't have anywhere near that walking downtown Vancouver, many new or very large parking stations in downtown Vancouver, and the Bus Rapid Transit system. The Bus Rapid Transit system was a significant part of that. Now, when that went away, actually, let me back up. These projects ran in parallel, the CRC project, the light rail project, and the Bus Rapid Transit project. They reinforced each other. When the Bus Rapid Transit project was being submitted to the FDA, the long-term plan was to show that we need that in order to get all those people across that bridge. Well, we'd have to subtract the cost of the, back then, we didn't have to deduct the cost of going back and forth on the bus system because that was funded another way. And so we could, we could use really big numbers to go across that bridge on light rail. But when the light rail project was decommissioned, now, C-Trans, according to the FDA requirements, cannot discontinue that route. They still have to provide that. Now, we have to account for the cost of Loop B across the bridge. And now, instead of being 10,400 people per day, well, a couple shuttle buses would be plenty. Why? Well, first of all, it shows that it costs a whole lot less, which helps to justify this system. We have to be really careful that we don't overstate the benefits and understate the costs. And this, to me, indicates that we should have adjusted the Bus Rapid Transit ridership numbers when this ERC project went away. To my knowledge, we did not. The reason that the Bus Rapid Transit ridership is important is because C-Trans is counting more full buses for Bus Rapid Transit. In other words, if you have a 60-passenger or 100-passenger bus, and you get a certain amount of fare for each one of those, if you can show that you have, predict that you have more people on that, then you're going to show, well, you've got more revenue coming in, and so the overall cost is going to be less. We haven't really adjusted those numbers down as a result of this ERC going away. We should have. The cost for the Bus Rapid Transit system, I've watched the presentation that C-Trans staff presented to this Vancouver City Council, and I assume you've seen the same presentation, and I see the basic numbers, and it shows that this system that actually costs substantially more, if they, the numbers show that it costs substantially less. How can that be? Well, the natural question would be, can you please show me your work? Like the old, like our math teacher used to say, show me your work. What makes up those numbers? If you watch the video from the C-Trans presentation, and I don't know what, what was answered here, I assume that somebody answered, questioned here like was questioned there, show me your work. I asked that same question to the C-Trans staff two days after that presentation, and the answer is, we can't show it to you. We really don't have it. It's preliminary, we're only 10% designed, and the numbers that we do have are old and things have changed and wait further along. And I'm thinking, if that be the answer, then why are you presenting these numbers that don't have a basis that you can justify? Our decisions are only as good as the information it's based on. If we can't show where that work comes from, I call it in question. It would be really good for us to be able to understand that those numbers are backed up by real data. So I'll take a breath here and make sure they allow for two-way conversation. Yes, sir.
You raised an interesting point that I wasn't aware of before. You indicated that the BRT project will take up the existing C-Trans reserves or the major portion of them?
Yes. Local, that's our, we have to provide local buy-in, and that local buy-in is the, is the consuming of our C-Trans reserves.
Scott, are you raising your hand?
Well, I'm, it just at, at some point, if the commissioner and council were interested, I would like an opportunity to try to clarify some of the information, and I don't, I want to respect the process. It's kind of awkward to be perfectly honest.
Actually, it would be really good to, for you to join me here.
Yeah, Scott, if you're okay with that, I want to make sure that we don't let time pass and we get confused on which information is correct. Come on up.
Yeah. We welcome scrutiny.
Mr. Mayor, do I still have the floor? Okay. If I've still got the floor, my, my point, my reason for asking that question is, capital facilities and equipment replacement is always an issue with. capital facilities and equipment replacement is always an issue with transportation systems. The average lifespan, as I understand it, is about 30 years for both facilities and equipment.
For the buses themselves, it's about 16 years is what we're looking at for the articulated.
Okay, so then that's worse than I thought. So, my question to you is, if you spend all your reserves on the BRT project, what are you going to have to replace capital facilities and equipment when the time comes? Because the federal government, who supplied between 50 and 100% of them to begin with, is not going to give you anything next time. They don't have it.
Yeah, and first, one clarification I would like to make is regarding the amount of the local C-Trans reserves. We currently have, I think the Commissioner may have mentioned this too, we're a pay-as-go agency. We don't have any debt. We've got no bonds that have been issued. We have carried a healthy financial reserve since the agency's inception. Where we stand currently is there's a board policy that says we should have 90 days' cash on hand, which is... equates to about $11 to $12 million, I believe, is what the number is. We also have a six-year adopted capital budget, and we have projects, local projects, not including BRT, the total $34 million. So, those are dollars that have been earmarked. So, we have the $11 to $12 million in the operating reserves, and then we have the $34 million that's currently allocated for specific projects over the next six years. And then, what we have left over is that third... That third element that we kind of refer to as our non-committed cash and investments.
About eight and a half million?
Yeah, it's that fund that we currently have. I believe it's right around eight and a half million. I know the financial projections from Diane O'Regan, our CFO, is that by the end of the year, we should be just under, I think just shy of $10 million in that fund.
Okay, you provided a lot of information, a lot of detail here. Let me ask you for a yes or no answer.
Yes.
If you spend this money for the BRT project, are you going to have the money to replace capital facilities and equipment when it comes time to do it?
Yes, we will.
And how are you going to get that money?
That's money that actually gets replenished over time. There's a couple of ways it can get replenished. One is through the sales tax revenue that comes into the system on a regular basis. The second is federal formula funds that are specifically targeted for things like replacement buses, replacement equipment, and capital facilities.
Don't count on those. And how many times are you going to raise taxes in order to buttress these reserves?
There are no... there are no plans, at least as it relates to the BRT project as a standalone project, to increase the local sales tax.
Actually, let me... tell me if I'm incorrect on this. We have a 20-year plan. By the way, to answer the numeric numbers here, the current uncommitted C-Trans cash reserves is about $8.5 million. This project consumes about $6.5 million of that local cash. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Also, I noticed that you also indicated this is... The BRT buses are being amortized over 16 years?
That is... that is what the... I believe that quote is actually from the Eugene BRT system. That's what most of them are seeing. You can actually, depending on your maintenance schedules and when you replace parts and brakes, you can actually run them for potentially longer than that. I know King County is doing that.
So, in comparison, this is for the articulated buses, which have two-thirds more maintenance required. They're more complex machines. How many years are we amortizing our current buses?
The FDA... the useful life that the FDA gives it is 12 years. We're currently running a lot of our fixed route coaches a lot longer than 12.
So, notice that the longer we amortize a capital asset, the lower... the longer it lasts, the lower it shows the cost for that. So, we have simpler buses that are being amortized for 12 years, and yet these more complicated articulated buses with 50% more wheels are amortized over 16 years. And I'm thinking, why aren't we comparing apples to apples? So, this is one area when it seems to me it is a stretch, and it would be, if anything, something we should question. So, cash reserves and amortization, those are two specifications that we should consider on this project.
You're using different accounting in government? Wow. I would just often come on your very optimistic stance about capital facilities and equipment replacement. I think it's optimistic, and I think that if you can do that, I applaud it. But I think that would make you unusual, almost to the point of being unique among the transit systems in this country, of which there are what?
The number of transit systems in the United States, I don't know. There's many of them out there, and I wouldn't want to characterize or try to inflate the way it sounds, but I would put our track record up against anyone over the years. There aren't many transit systems that have the level of transit service that we do that are debt-free. And if you look at our ability to be able to competitively secure grants to help us modernize the fleet as we've been able to do, I know the Commissioner mentioned the number of hybrid buses that we have in our fleet. One of the reasons we've been able to do it is we've been aggressive in terms of pursuing some of those opportunities and have been successful in doing that. Are there guarantees that we'll be able to continue that into the future? I mean, we can't stand here today and guarantee that. But I do believe that the commitment... not only is the commitment there, but the track record is there as well.
We've got possibly four or five transit systems in this country that pay their own way.
I'd like to... go ahead.
Sorry. I'm not aware of any in this country that pay their own way. I could be incorrect about that, but I'm not aware of any.
Yeah, I just had a question. I'm not sure I heard quite correctly. The 16-year amortization, that comes from the experience in Eugene?
That is... that is what... that is one of the BRT systems that we've been looking at and we're pulling data and trying to learn from. And it's our information that's come back, is that they're projecting a 16-year lifespan.
So, that's actual experience?
Well, they've not had it. That is their plan. They've had it in place now, I want to say, seven or eight years. So, they've not gone through... they've not had these buses long enough to cover that period of time.
Thank you.
To compare apples to apples, does Eugene also amortize their diesel and their normal hybrid buses 16 years as well?
I'd have to... I don't know that off the top of my head. I'd have to find that out.
I would think that would be relevant, because if we amortize a more complex machine over a longer period of time, we should have good reason for doing so. It usually goes the other way. I also want to address your other question. How are we going to pay for this? The 20-year plan shows a... does show the plan. And it shows that this is one of four BRT systems that are planned to be built. Planned to be built, this is the first one. Each of them that were studied added up to over $400 million in capital reserve, in capital costs. So, if we say yes to this, we're establishing the first leg of four. And that same 20-year plan shows multiple sales tax increases, and every year, fare increase to cover this cost. So, we're making a more expensive system to pay for a more expensive system, because the Bus Rapid Transit, these million-dollar super buses, the 1.1 and 1.2 million-dollar buses, they cost more per hour to operate, and they require 67% more tires, because they have more axles, right?
Yeah. If I could, Commissioner, also clarify the number of BRT lines that you referenced in the 20-year plan. C-Trans 20-year plan that is currently adopted, although, as I think we mentioned in our presentation here a few weeks back, it is, in essence, no longer a... An operational plan in terms of the CRC project, no longer being part of it. So, we will be re-engaging with the C-Trans board later this year on the next 20-year plan or an update of the current one. But there were a range of alternatives that were included in that 20-year plan document. The version... one of the alternatives that had the BRT... Excuse me, the BRT corridors were actually based from a study that the RTC did in our community here back in 2008 that looked at different corridors that may be conducive for high-capacity transit and specifically Bus Rapid Transit. The preferred alternative that was approved by the board in conjunction with the 20-year plan only assumed the one corridor on fourth plane for Bus Rapid Transit. That doesn't necessarily mean that that would be the one and only, but as it relates to the 20-year plan that's currently adopted, over the next 20 years, it only assumed fourth plane, Bus Rapid Transit, recognizing there's an MPO or a region-wide plan, that there are other corridors where it may work, but that's not part of the adopted plan.
And that would be an area, because I... that we ought to ensure that we understand what that 20-year plan reads. Because I've been through that plan multiple times as well, and yes, it is out of date. It does center around the light rail project, the CRC project. And as I understood that plan, it shows all four, and I'd like to be able to see the reference where it says, "We're only going to assume one of those four," which is Bus Rapid, which is the fourth plane corridor. I'd love to be able to see that. So, I have it on my list here to... Show me... show me your work. Show me where it says that.
I will, and it's actually the column where the five alternatives are that's titled "The Preferred Alternative," because there's the subsequent chapter that describes the preferred alternative, and that's what lists out the...
Yes, and each of those alternatives included multiple tax hikes, sales tax hikes, correct?
Well, not all, because there was a no build or no new tax alternative as well.
And, well, what I'm saying is, we...
If I could, and I think Scott put it best, this is a little odd.
Okay.
My understanding, Commissioner, is that you were going to be here to give us an alternative or a rebuttal or something to what C-Trans presented, the staff presented, a couple of weeks ago. What I want to avoid is something that is just going back and forth and trying to figure out all the answers to a transit system. What we're trying to do tonight is to answer enough questions among the council in order to give Connie Jo, our representative to C-Trans, a direction potentially from the council on where we would like her to vote on Bus Rapid Transit alone. As we're going here, I could see us being here for another two or three hours and not even getting to that point, but...
I'll step away.
Actually, I welcome you here. You don't... we don't... So, we don't need to go into a detail.
I'm a stickler for making sure that correct information is out there, so...
Yes, and that's basically...
I don't want to leave people with the wrong impression.
Was not to simply... to just simply present the other side of the coin. The goal here is to make sure that we welcome scrutiny and that we understand what is not being presented to this council.
Then I believe we're under a misperception of what was happening tonight, because when I talked to Connie Jo earlier, when I talked to David earlier, the whole thing was, "We didn't hear the other side of BRT. We need to hear the other side of BRT." And I think, at least from my standpoint, and I believe David's from talking with Connie Jo over the weekend.
We'd like to be able to have...
That was the intent, was that we would have...
I'd be happy to present...
I guess the other side, whatever that means.
I'd be happy to present.
I have a question right along that line.
Go ahead, Paul.
Is it your... something I don't quite understand. Is it your... I understand that it makes... that you say... You think it makes sense to separate the fourth-plane route from the bridge route. Once that's done, is it your position that the fourth-plane route is good enough as is? That it does not need improvement?
There are several corrections that need to be made. And by the way, the Bus Rapid Transit plan does just that. It does separate the two loops. The problem is that we will be crediting Bus Rapid Transit for the correction inside of the breaking.
I want to focus on... I want to focus on that mill-plane route. Is... I don't understand... are you... You say that we should not do the BRT on mill-plane? We should? We don't need it?
Fourth plane?
I'm sorry, fourth plane. Vancouver Mall, downtown Vancouver route. What... where are we at on that? Do we need to do something?
C-Trans needs to do something, and that is that we need to be able to solve the problem in a way that is a no-cost and actually a cost-saving solution, and that is what is not being presented here. C-Trans was the one, the agency that made this change, that created the problems that have persisted and escalated over the last seven years. And C-Trans is in a perfect position to correct this problem. And if that correction still has problems to address, then we can potentially justify a $50 million additional project that costs higher operation and maintenance costs in order to address those. My point is that the problem... the solution that's being presented to us actually goes backwards. It does more harm than good. It consumes our cash reserves. It raises fares. It depends on tax increases. It actually ends up causing the whole system to be less financially sound, and it will tax the broader... the other routes of C-Trans. I also look at... there's a few basic practices and very specific examples of where the costs have been understated and the benefits have been overstated. For instance, the... right now, there is an office that C-Trans has been paying... or a store that C-Trans has been paying for in the Vancouver Mall. And it's about $6,900 a month, plus other kinds of fees on top of that. And that office is going to go away, not because of Bus Rapid Transit, but because we, as a board, made a... authorized an e-fare system last year that's automatically providing tickets, so we don't need that.
Maybe I'm a little slow. I don't understand what that has to do with BRT.
When C-Trans shows the cost savings for this system, they're pulling numbers and presenting them to us as though Bus Rapid Transit is providing the benefit. The savings for the lease at the mall has nothing to do with this Bus Rapid Transit plan, yet it's shown as crediting the cost for this plan.
This is a discussion for another time, but I just want to observe that there are basically two ways to fund capital projects. You can build up cash reserves by charging basically fares or taxes until you have enough money to pay for the project. If that's what you're doing, it's not a fair argument to say, "Well, it's reserves. You can't spend it." Because the reason for creating those reserves was to spend them. The alternative is to not build reserves and go out for bonds, for debt financing. Now, I personally am a fan of that, because if you raise money over 10 years to build a new system, then certainly the people who paid for it in the first of the 10 years are not going to use it. On the other hand, if you do it with debt financing, then the people who are using the new system will be paying off the debt. So, I... you know, user fees are attractive, but I don't... If you're going to build up cash reserves in order to do a cash... to do a capital project, then you need to do the capital project. You can't make the argument, "Well, we built the reserves. We can't spend them," because people 10 years ago paid for that. The other thing is that, at least in the presentation, as I understood it, one of the big problems on the fourth-plane corridor actually has to do with wheelchair access. And that one of the things that makes the bus route so unpredictable in terms of time is that if you get several wheelchair boardings, especially at the same stop, you're now going to spend more than five minutes at that one stop instead of less than 60 seconds, if there are no wheelchairs. So, that makes it very difficult to effectively schedule. And the one outstanding advantage that I understood about the at-level boarding is that the wheelchair access would be vastly improved and much, much quicker, so that the wheelchair people, in effect, were not holding back the rest of the system. And we certainly need to take care of them. I don't have any doubt about that. But it... that was one thing that kind of leaped out at me about the spending the money to build the platforms.
I would like to be able to address your two points. The wheelchair access, one of the other comparisons that doesn't seem right with this project is we're comparing a Bus Rapid Transit's bus that comes down to... that requires actually raised platforms to be able to wheel directly onto the bus to the current diesel buses that have steps and very slow... and very slow ramps, or not ramps, but lifts, that, that does take, uh, significant time to load wheelchairs and unload wheelchairs. The comparison should really be to the 14 hybrid buses that we have, because they're very different beasts. Those hybrid buses, I've ridden them. Uh, they have a very low floor to start with. The wheel, they have large wheel wells, so they can be very close to the, to the roadway. And when they pull up to a curb, they automatically kneel. And they also have a very quick ramp that just goes, like that. And it basically allows a wheelchair to wheel directly on it in a matter of seconds. It is a, uh, so we're comparing the steps, old diesels, to the bus rapid transit, uh, that, that is level boarding. It's not a fair comparison. We already, C-TRAN has done a very good job already solving that problem with the hybrid buses. They're a very different beast.
So you would propose replacing the diesel buses on the fourth plane route with new hybrid buses?
Uh, we already have 14 hybrid buses, and there are four that are currently running along fourth, uh, fourth plane. And, and there's a total, uh, on fourth plane of seven or eight buses. And so it would be taking four of, three or four of those other buses that are already in the system and assigning them to this area where they are needed the most.
Are they the same-sized buses?
Um, they are essentially, they, they, they provide the need of, the problem with fourth plane, when you run your buses on time, is that, is not that you run out of capacity. You do run out of capacity when your buses are way behind schedule, because you've been tied up in Portland traffic, traffic or bridge lift. When your buses are running reliably back and forth between downtown Vancouver and the mall, uh, you've got ample capacity there. So capacity is not an issue with either the diesel or the hybrid buses. 10 or 15 minutes, or, in fact, it's about 30 minutes from the Vancouver Mall with the current stops that we have now to downtown Vancouver. And, uh, so if you have two buses, then basically you're making a 30-minute loop. If you've got four buses, you're making a 15-minute loop. If you've got six buses, you're making a 10-minute loop. So with six buses, we can do better than what we're doing now, which uses 11 buses and goes all the way across into Portland. It's the worst combination right now. It seems it's set up to fail and to argue for this $50 million system, uh, which costs more to operate.
Uh, David?
The very name, Bus Rapid Transit, suggests that one of our goals is to save minutes along the route. This, has there been a study done that determines how many minutes we're going to save on this route?
Um, the, there've been plenty of studies geared toward the bus rapid transit preferred alternative. Uh, the, the saving of the minutes is really made up in, in really, um, three different steps. One, the elimination of bus stops. Uh, I, I show this here, but, uh, in act, that, that does not show the bus stops. I think 11 bus stops are being eliminated along fourth lane. If, if eliminating bus stops along fourth lane speeds the service and improves service to our riders, why aren't we doing that today? Because we don't have to modify the road in order to, uh, change a bus stop. We could just simply say, "That's, that's the bus stop. We can just simply, don't stop there. Just simply remove the, the sign." The bus rapid transit system requires substantial capital improvements to the road itself. Uh, it's not just buying additional buses. We need to modify, uh, the roads and, and we also have to have, there's a substantial investment at every bus stop. But if the elimination of 17 bus stops saves time, then shouldn't we consider doing that now? Also, when, I, I rode the, the number four bus interviewing riders. And the time, uh, to transit a fourth plane was the least of the worries. Most of them, uh, most of them, the cost of the fare is the most significant, uh, issue for them. These are not normally commuters along fourth plane. These are not people normally getting to work. The time of, the peak ridership is in the middle of the day, where people are running errands, are going to and from stores, are doing to and from appointments. Um, and they have, it's not like we've got to get to work real quick. They're running errands, and they're important, and, but they're not complaining that it's not fast enough, except when the buses get delayed. And that delay is, is caused by the two loops being in series, in series, and the one going into, combining the two loops.
Scott?
Just a couple of points, and thank you for the opportunity. Regarding the, the, the travel along the corridor and specifically with the wheelchair boardings themselves, the ramp is actually the quickest part, whether it's a diesel, uh, an old diesel hybrid, or, or, I'm sorry, an old diesel bus or one of the new hybrids. The ramp is quicker for the hybrids. The time is actually in the securement of the wheelchair in the bus itself. That's where you see the three up to five minutes, um, time and time it takes to secure that passenger in. So regardless of whether it's a, it's a, one of the newer hybrids or whether it's one of our older diesel, uh, buses, that's where the time factor becomes very significant. The other feature that's not been mentioned about, uh, about the project tonight is we also have the off-board fare collection. I think it was mentioned by the commissioner a little bit, um, earlier. Well, it's not e-fair. It's actually just off-board fare collection, um, because you can buy a, you can actually buy a ticket itself at the ticket vending machines. But, um, we keep a log, and this is information, I know, uh, the commissioner's been very good at, at asking lots of questions of staff, and we've been, uh, working very hard at getting the responses to them. One of those responses is a log that's kept. Um, we hear from our operators every time a bus is delayed on any of our routes more than five minutes. And so we keep a log, and, and we want to know what's causing the delay. The number one cause of delay for the Route 4 and the fourth plane corridor, it's not traffic congestion or going across the bridge. It's actually the, the wheelchair lifts, the number of wheelchair lifts that we have each time. When you have that three-to-five-minute time allotment that it takes to secure those in, the BRT buses have, the buses are designed to where you can have the wheelchair passengers wheel in and self-severe themselves. By the way, they face in the bus, and you have the, uh, you have the backing to make it safe and perfectly acceptable. And that's why you see that, that more fuller time savings, if you will, for a BRT system compared to our hybrids or the, the traditional diesel buses.
And these things, they show me your work. I'd like to be able to see those numbers, because actually I'm a database guy. And the, every time a passenger gets on or off a C-TRAN bus, the automated passenger count system on every one of these fixed route buses creates an entry in, in, in the database on the bus. It says the GPS location, the time, the bus number, the, how many got on, how many got off, how many are on the bus. All that information has been, has been collected for each of these buses since 2008. C-TRAN would, it would be natural for C-TRAN to say, "And here are the numbers. Let me just show you how this argues for the, and what's really happening there. Let the numbers speak for themselves." The problem is that C-TRAN says, "Well, we can't do that." Um, I'm a database guy, so I went, uh, and grabbed all of the raw data, processed that and presented that to C-TRAN and showed that the, these buses are full less than the current buses. They're full less than 1% of the time. And the time for boarding and unboarding these things and the recording of the wheelchairs is something that somehow this isn't adding up. Uh, the, uh, interviewing with the bus drivers when it comes to the loop A, loop B, being the violation of logic. Why in the world did we make this change and didn't fix it? Um, and why haven't, if, if this BRT solution, this locally preferred, preferred alternative does that, why haven't we already done it? It's a lower-cost solution. I also wanted to address your question here regarding financing, cash reserves and debt. Uh, C-TRAN really, I don't think we're even authorized to have debt. So debt is not an issue. It's not a question. It's not even, um, being considered for any of these things. Uh, the cash reserves that C-TRAN has now are a result of, uh, the two ballot measures that passed. One in 2005 that said if, that a 40% cut would have to be made to preserve current service if you didn't give us the tax hike. That's what that tax hike was for. It was not for bus rapid transit. In 2011, the same argument went out. We cannot afford the basic, most core service. We're going to have to leave people at the curve, the most needy people. And we're going to have to cut services, core services, by 35% if you don't give us that, that tax hike in order to provide for that. Uh, at the time, Tiffany Couch went through all those numbers and said, "You know, you don't need it for that. It appears that what you're doing is that you are, um, leading the people to believe that this is for preserving service. In reality, you're going to use that for bus rapid transit and say, 'We don't need to get voter approval.'" Well, the voters defeated the bus rapid transit issue when it came before the ballot. Uh, it was in 2012 or 13, Scott?
It was, which, uh, there was.
The last one.
12.
No, it was 12. Okay, so there is a specific ballot measure to fund this project in 2012. And it was also combined with the Light Rail project. Uh, the voters soundly defeated that ballot measure, and the voters also soundly defeated, uh, the, we broke it into two separate advisory votes, uh, both for, that covered countywide, for the CRC as, Light Rail as well as the bus rapid transit.
Do we know what the vote was in Waschugul on that? I think I added it up and sent it to you, Connie Jo, but I can't remember.
I don't have it on the phone, I mean.
I would think that would be a really important question as representatives of the citizens of Waschugul, to find out how did the citizens of Waschugul, uh, answer? What is their position on that? Though, so that cash reserve that we, that we are enjoying now is a result of the tax hike that was supposed to be for preserving service. It'd be then a 35% cut. Now that we have this excess, which was predicted by the forensic accountant, the, if we were to keep that reserve and say, "We're going to be financially sound and we don't have to raise taxes when we don't need to otherwise," um, that would be a sound, we would all, uh, serve citizens better. We'd end up having more riders, because we have, we can afford lower fares. But instead, it's to consume those reserves and raise fares, which lowers ridership. And this project assumes a 40%, right? Increase in ridership, even though we're raising fares. That's backwards. The, there's two comparisons. One is if you raise fares little by little, then the people that are riding think, "Well, it's just a little. I think I'll maybe keep riding." Some will fall off, but you also have people, the 40% new riders that take a look and say, "I, well, I've been, I've been using some other means." How much is that? And they're looking at the absolute cost for the first time, and that is substantially higher with this system than it would otherwise be. So again, we're going backwards. We're spending our cash reserves, and we're raising our fares, and we're becoming less financially sound. And we're doing some things here that I call into question. All of these things, first of all, I support the mission of C-TRAN, which is to provide public transit for those that need it and those that want it. But this is not the way, because we keep going backwards on our ridership. 15 years ago, we had more than we do today. What's wrong with this? We can do better. And, uh, so at this point, I would not say, "Don't say no." I would say, "Show me your work. Let's make sure that we understand what those real honest trade-offs are and welcome that two-way conversation." You see, we have some differences here. This is not the place to work it out. But certainly, the representation to each of these small cities should be, should happen after the numbers are solidified. After C-TRAN can show the backup work that says, "And, and here's what backs us up." We don't have that. And I have asked, uh, it's probably an understatement, more questions than anyone else on this project and C-TRAN, because I believe in a fast, efficient, low-cost for the rider and low-cost for the community, wonderful transit system. We need that, but we keep going backwards, and I think we can do better. So I'm thinking it's premature to say yes to this, because it's not even defined yet. We have a, uh, plan that was presented to us that shows a picture of the Vancouver Mall and moving the transit station from the south, from the north side to the south side. And it shows a walkway that can, that displaces a whole row of cars right up to the mall. And the Vancouver Mall, there is no agreement with the Vancouver Mall to do, to somehow even allow that. And the compensation for that is, well, we'll, the C-TRAN's plan is to build more parking spots right up near SR 500 for people to park to, uh, and, and yet, we're assuming that's going to be acceptable to the Vancouver Mall. It might, but it might not. It, at this point, we don't know. But I question whether or not people are going to park out there instead of parking over here and not have to charge C-TRAN and additional lease costs, or even if, if the arrangement with the mall allows it. Right now, the last, uh, statement, last report we got from C-TRAN is that, uh, I'm sorry, from the Vancouver, uh, from the Vancouver Mall, is that they don't even allow it at any price.
Don't allow what?
It don't allow the displacement of parking spaces that are there. This project also, this is not a park-and-ride. This, this, uh, transit station that's being planned for this, for the Vancouver Mall allows for zero parking places for transit riders. Buses, bus rapid transit, you name it, zero. Nobody can park at that mall and get on the bus, according to the current agreement. Is that right, Scott?
There is no park-and-ride facility, and that's been clearly communicated. In fact, I think we actually talked about it during our workshop here. It's not a park-and-ride.
But your, in the end, your parking spaces are a net zero, correct? In the proposal?
The impact to the mall.
Right.
Itself. It, that's what it's projected to be, and one of the ways that we get there is, uh, we showed you that, I think, the, the diagram with the tra, uh, traffic signal that was going in that was new. The mall's plan's actually called for a roundabout in that, in that vicinity. Were they to do the roundabout, they would consume 50 of their own parking spaces. So by the light going in as part of this project, they would save an additional 50 spaces, as well as recouping the spaces they'd get back on the north end from the relocation of the transit center. So while we don't have a, a signed agreement per se, you know, some of it is the fact that you've got a little bit of the chicken and the egg thing happening here, because you've got a project that's being designed. We're approaching a 60% design level. So as you work your way through, you're refining costs, you're negotiating these agreements. And that's why there's some of these pieces that will continue to move until you get all the way through final design and you're ready to go construct a project. But what you're doing is you're basing some of these project decisions based on where you're at, at this particular phase of the project. And the Federal Transit Administration looks at that 60% threshold, which we'll be at here in a few weeks, to lock in some of those cost testaments, recognizing there's still some additional work that's yet to be done. But the mall isn't going to sign a legal agreement unless they know this project is actually for real. They won't know it's for real until there's commitments made on the part of the federal, and, uh, we've got a state grant that's paying for part of it that we've briefed you on, as well as that local commitment. So all of these pieces kind of have to come together. In an ideal world, it would be great to know to the, you know, to the penny, all of the costs, um, and have all of the agreements lined up before you make the decision. But that's not the way projects like this, as I'm sure you are all well aware, always work. It's just not practical.
And certainly, nothing is perfect, and nothing is 100%. And we're not talking about going to the nearest penny. We don't even know to the nearest million at this point. So the, really has to do with what process, what sequence do we follow? Do we give the green light? Does C-TRAN come and say, "Well, give us buy-in," and you don't even know the cost of it? And so that we can, we can just simply make sure that we get the green light and, and build it? And it's like test-driving a car that you might consider after you bought it. This isn't the sequence. This isn't the plan. That's not how you end up with great systems. That's how you end up with systems that you wonder, "How in the world did we get ourselves in this pickle with a system that costs so much and does so little?"
Another comment. There's, there's a lot of vocabulary in this government business that ends up being misdirective. And 10% design is one of those. 10% design is not a plan, it's a concept. And it's not really, I mean, to go from, to get the data, to do the design, which is even 90% is when you really have a design. To get the data, to get there, is fabulously expensive and has to be funded somehow. It's not like you can reach into your back pocket and wave a magic wand, and now we've got a 90% design. It's, it costs big bucks to get there. And that's how you keep from having a pig in a poke. And that's how you keep from having a pig in a poke. The other thing that I want to come back to, though, is, so what would you do differently on fourth plane?
Two, two questions. First of all, the cost for the design is not what's in question. C-Trans has already committed the cost and spent millions of dollars studying this. We're only at ten percent at this point. Last meeting-
That's not, that's not what I understood.
No, we were at thirty percent last September when we submitted the small starts application to FTA. We were at thirty percent. Will be in a couple of weeks, actually, well, June twenty-ish, we're going to be at sixty percent.
Okay. So, all right, so thirty percent is what we're basing our numbers on, and what we're asking for at this point, on thirty percent, which is a little bit more than a concept, and at this point, there are a lot of variables, is to go ahead and give a hundred percent approval now. That's the problem. C-Trans is going and lobbying each small city saying, give us the green light, we want to build this thing, and we still don't know the basic numbers to the, to the six decimal point, to, within a million dollars. We're still millions of dollars different now than we were in the last FTA application.
Brent, did you have a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Couple of things. I'm sorry I missed the workshop two weeks ago because I had a little emergency. I lost my computer on, left it on an airplane. I haven't gotten it back yet either. But one of the things that I was wondering about is, why are we spending so much time on this? Because the bus rapid transit system is not coming anywhere near Waschugul, and what's the benefit to Waschugul of the bus rapid transit system? We're paying for it. Our, our residents are paying sales tax for that, and to the extent that some of the fare box money ends up in the general pot of C-Trans, we're, we're paying for it. So is there a benefit to Waschugul of the bus rapid transit system?
I would say there is a great disadvantage to Waschugul, because this system, if it gets the green light, will require tax increases for Waschugul, for, for C-Trans wide, multiple tax increases, sales tax increases. It will also increase sale, fares for the citizens of Waschugul. Both of those directions, if you're not getting, if Waschugul residents are not getting direct benefit from this, are you willing to be able to say, I want, I will support having more sales tax, fund C-Trans for this project, and, and higher fares for the citizens to ride just simply the buses that, that the most Waschugul residents do ride?
Scott? This, there are clear opposites in information that we received during the presentation versus what we've got here, and I guess that was the purpose for this evening.
Yeah, and, and just to clarify, because there has been a lot of talk about the operation and maintenance costs, some of the data that we were able to share with council at the presentation here a couple of weeks ago, and by the way, all of these reports and the data and the finance plans and the, the modeling assumptions, it's all available on C-Trans website. We have our alternatives analysis report, we have our FTA small starts application. So all of the data behind the assumptions has been, continues to be, and will continue to be made publicly available. But the operations and maintenance costs, currently with the eleven buses that we have dedicated on that corridor to provide the peak hour service, is, is costing C-Trans General Fund or C-Trans about four point three million dollars. I might be off just a, just a hair there. With a, with this, with this BRT project, we are projecting twenty percent travel time savings to where we'd be able to provide the service that it takes eleven fixed route forty-foot buses with six and possibly seven articulated buses. That results in a net savings of about eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars annually that can go into reinvestment for other parts of the system. Perhaps some of it's Waschugul, perhaps some of it's Camas, perhaps it's other parts of Vancouver. But the, but the point is, and, and the suggestion, and I have the utmost respect for, for, for the commissioner, and I understand that, that people have strong opinions on, on these and, and, and other issues, but if, if you take nothing else from some of the information I've presented to you, it is, it is our heartfelt belief, and this is based on the, the data and the numbers, that this project, if it is constructed, will bring a savings, not just because it's C-Trans and we're telling you so, but you look at the ridership that's on the corridor today, and it represents, it's actually higher than twenty-two of the twenty-nine BRT systems in operation in the United States today. So a lot of the projections that have been vetted, not just by the FTA, but an expert review panel that was appointed by the governor a couple of years ago, indicates that there is real savings that comes from these, from these type of projects. Michael Ennis from the Washington Policy Center, who did a, who did a very thorough analysis on Proposition One, and it was strong opposition to the light rail component of the CRC project, specifically called out C-Trans proposed BRT project on fourth plane is making good economic sense. I could give you a copy of the report, and, you know, this is somebody who is, is very conservative, and is very, looking at it through the lens of, kind of an anti-transit, at least in terms of the light rail component of the project, but the BRT actually does pencil out and makes sense for a corridor like fourth plane. So, I mean, I just, I, you know, and I, and I appreciate it, and I'm not trying to, to do, you know, this point, counterpoint, but it's, but it is something. I mean, you know, I, it would be a heck of a lot easier on us as staff to just kind of go along with the status quo. We're trying to, in large part, to increase ridership, to give people stronger mobility options, which is part of the organization's mission statement. We may disagree on the means and the methods in which to do that, but the, but the intent is to provide a better, more cost-effective project, and, and, you know, and, and we believe that we've come a long way in terms of, of demonstrating that, recognizing, you know, the LPA, the locally preferred alternative's been endorsed by the Vancouver City Council, RTC Board of Directors, as well as the C-Trans Board. And, you know, we're here to continue to, to answer questions, and, and, and I appreciate, you know, the commissioner being here and also allowing me to, to get up and talk, and you all as well. So I just hope that-
I had one, one question I had generally, but I haven't, actually haven't thought about this issue a whole lot. But I associate bus rapid transit systems with larger cities than Vancouver, and I'm surprised Eugene has one too. What's Eugene's population, a hundred and fifty thousand or something like that?
Two hundred and seventy-five.
Is that big now?
They're actually going to construction on their third BRT line.
Okay, and, and it seems like BRT has the same issues that light rail has. You need a certain density of population for it to work, less so than light rail, but the same issue. Is there a reason why the fourth plane corridor was selected as the, our one and only route in Clark County?
Yeah, fourth plane is the, is by far, we kind of refer to it as RI five. It's our highest ridership route. About thirty percent of our total system ridership, at some point along their trip, they're on the fourth plane corridor. The ridership, there's twenty-nine BRT projects or lines in operation in the United States. Our existing ridership on the fourth plane corridor with the fixed route bus is higher than twenty-two of those twenty-nine lines, BRT lines in, in, in operation. So, you know, there, there's a ridership that's in place today that, that stands to benefit greatly, and I, and I know the, the commissioners had some different ways of, of looking at these ridership numbers, but the, but the reality is, when you're out there on a, you know, on a regular basis, and you're seeing the ridership, and you're seeing the number of standees, if you simply keep the, the, the local buses, the forty-foot buses, serving it with fifteen-minute headways, we're going to continue to have overcrowding to the point where you disenfranchise potential ridership. You're unable without, without significant new investment to increase ridership along that corridor, and as long as it's unreliable, based on the multiple wheelchair lifts that we see there every day and the procurement that has to go on, it's, it's, it's unreasonable, and I guess in our view, to expect significant increases in ridership when we can't adequately provide for the busiest corridor that, that we have in the system today.
I'd like to make a few corrections if I, if I would, and I also have high respect here. The loop A, loop B, by itself, would solve this problem. The, that would provide the same number of buses, of the current hybrid buses can solve this problem. The eleven buses that Scott Patterson referred to is not the fourth plane, is not the number four bus. It's the number four bus plus the number forty-four bus. This plan compares adding those two routes together and keep them running, so it shows a higher current cost, which is unnecessarily high. And the bus rapid transit plan also breaks the number forty-four route into two. The number forty-four route on the bus rapid transit plan terminates at Vancouver Mall. So they don't have to show those extra three buses going along fourth plane Boulevard between the Vancouver Mall and downtown Vancouver. That savings is something we can do now that doesn't depend on the bus rapid transit project. Yet, we only make those corrections when we get this magic ingredient of bus rapid transit. So what we're doing is we're comparing the corrections to problems that should have already been fixed, that would cost us nothing to fix and save us money in operations now, and we're, and C-Trans has been holding them off for seven years in order to get this, you got to get this magic ingredient before they'll, they'll fix that, those current problems. I, I would like people to show, and also, eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars, it doesn't pencil out. And it, you have, you have, you play games like the Vancouver Mall lease. Well, we credit that for this, it has nothing to do with this project. It has to do with the not needing to add your own store. We already solved that problem earlier. So six to seven buses that we already have of hybrids solve this problem. And we don't need an extra articulated super bus to be able to carry all these extra passengers because they don't stack up as long. What I'd like people to do is to show if, you can't rein it up there.
David, some, somewhere along the way, we need to start reading this in. We're at an hour and ten minutes now, and we haven't even got to deliberations with the council yet, so.
Yes, okay, I'll just point out one last-
I think what the council is still, at least myself and what I've heard from a couple of others, if, if it's not the plan that was proposed by the staff, what is the plan?
The plan is to fix the problem with current resources, allow us to save the money, lower fares, keep the cash reserves, serve citizens better now, cost no, require no fare increases, require no tax increases. That's the plan, and we don't need a fifty million dollar system that-
So where's the discrepancy?
The discrepancy is that C-Trans, and there are nine C-Trans members, we need to, to work with our staff to make sure that we have real numbers and that it's transparent. And we don't come and lobby for approval for a system that at least, it doesn't seem to add up, not, not to me. The numbers need to speak for themselves.
I might stand corrected, but I don't believe C-Trans lobbied to come to us. I believe we turned to C-Trans and asked them to come to help do the update for Connie Joe. I don't believe, correct me if I'm wrong, David, it wasn't C-Trans calling us saying, we want to come do this for you.
C-Trans' plan is for next month to vote to approve this system. And that is going to, the people that make up that voting board come from all these city councils, and Connie Joe Freeman is the representative from this community. This-
We get that.
Yes, and it appears, and also abstaining will translate to an, an approval for this project, because already Vancouver always votes as a block, and-
I think, I think we're talking about two different things. So my question, and where's the discrepancy? If, if this is able to be solved with seven existing hybrid buses, yet at a staff report, it needs six to seven articulated buses, which are larger than standard buses. Somewhere, there's a numbers difference there that makes no sense.
If you take out the difference between the kind of bus, bus rapid, a fifty million dollar bus rapid transit system?
I'm not talking about-
And do everything else-
I'm just talking about the capacity on the buses.
Well, I understand, but what I'm saying is, just about all of the other ingredients that costs nothing are included in the bus rapid transit plan, that would fix the system without the fifty million dollars and without the extra tax increases, without the fare increases, without the, the consuming of our local cash reserves.
Then why would we not already be doing that?
That's a really good question.
That is a very good question. Very good question.
I've, I've got a question.
But I believe the answer is that it doesn't fix it.
I believe it does, sir.
Scott?
The, the challenge is if you, is if you assume the twenty percent travel time savings, then you could do it with six to seven forty-foot buses. You can't get the travel time savings with the current station configuration, with the current buses, whether they're hybrids or, or, or the traditional diesel buses, because the issue, again, you go back to the number, number of wheelchair lifts on that corridor, the amount of time it takes to secure, that's where the delays along the fourth plane corridor are happening. And unless you do something to accommodate it, to be able to, to fix it, you're going to be operating in the same, in the same dilemma. The Cross River Shuttle, and there's traffic on the I five bridge, particularly when there's a bridge lift, there's no question about that. And so the-
So not spending money on the route and using seven hybrids that are already here does not fix the problem?
It does not, it, it does not fix the problem, and it's actually in part kind of demonstrated, and this is, the, the document on the screen was taken from, I can't remember which, which one of the reports, but if you look at the existing and the no build in the LPA project, what the commissioner is suggesting, suggesting is closely representative to the no, what's referred to as the no build in this alternatives analysis document. And you just can't, you can't do it with fewer buses and expect the travel time savings if you do nothing to address the number one cause of congestion on the corridor to begin with. That's the point.
And that's the point I'd like to make. We can't fix this without addressing the core problem. That middle column is mislabeled. It's a, it says no build option. It's really a no fix option, and that's what we've been living with for seven years. What is important is the existing blue column compared to the green column on the right. The magic number there is the existing column, the first one where it says routes four and forty-four, under total service hours, it shows forty-six thousand, six hundred. That is a really high number. We've been burning those kinds of hours to do less, to, to continue the problems that we have today. Now, if you look at the LPA, the far, the, the far column, the green one, the same column, that number drops down to twenty-seven thousand. How in the world can we do that? Even if there is a minutes difference in loading wheelchairs or tying down wheelchairs, you're not going to have a twenty thousand hour difference between these two. The difference between these two is not due to hybrid, I'm sorry, it's not due to the articulated bus rapid, bus rapid transit fifty million dollar project. It is due to fixing what we already have broken. The middle column is there to convince us that, well, if we do nothing, sure enough, it'll still stay broken. The problem is, it's unnecessarily broken, and we can fix it at no cost today, and save money and lower our fares compared to fifty million dollars that raises them.
David?
At last, thank you. I raised the issue of how many minutes we're going to save a little while ago. The estimates I've seen are four to seven minutes. Can you enlighten me on that?
Eight to ten minutes per trip is what the, is what the travel time savings indicate.
Eight to ten minutes?
Eight to ten minutes.
And the cost of this is going to be sixty million dollars?
The, the current cost estimate is fifty-three point four million with eighty percent coming from the federal government.
So it's, it's a fifty million dollar, fifty-three million dollar capital project, and then, notice also that the extra cost, because this is a more expensive system, is that correct? The dollars per hour to run a bus rapid transit system is more than our current system, especially the hybrid system.
To run, to run a sixty-foot articulated bus, because it's a larger vehicle and it has more tires, there is a slightly higher operating cost per hour. However, that's more than balanced out when you have the travel time savings, and that's where you get the dollars and cents. And that's where you get the, if you look at the three columns, the commissioner referred to the first one with the existing conditions and the number of bus hours, that's based on that bus going across the bridge today, the no build option.
Let me go back, let me go back to my point, though. We keep losing this point.
Yes.
The cost of this savings in time is somewhere between seven and eight million dollars a minute. I would be willing to try the solution that Commissioner Mador is advancing, and if it doesn't work, then bring back the BRT project. But try the, the first thing you do in anything like this in transportation, I've, I've run transportation outfits, is to try to adjust the schedule.
Yeah, and, and, and just, I guess, and with all due respect, and we have, by not just adjusting the schedule, but a few years ago, we actually eliminated- but a few years ago, we actually eliminated, I want to say it's twenty-three or twenty-four stops along the Fourth Plain Corridor in an effort to try to help with schedule reliability. What we have is a corridor where we have specific data. The commissioner's referenced a lot of it here this evening. But we also know what, you know, what causes the most congestion and takes the most time in terms of, you know, the wheelchair boardings. And what results from that issue and that set of facts alone can't be solved by keeping the existing system that we have in place today. We could adjust our frequencies, we can put a couple more buses, it's about eight hundred thousand dollars per additional forty-foot coach to pay for the operator and the fuel and everything that goes along with that. The challenge is, you're still going to have a very unreliable service because we can't maintain consistency with our schedules when we have four wheelchairs that board on one trip from Vancouver Mall to downtown Vancouver, and maybe it's only one going in the opposite direction. I mean, we're having to manage essentially headways where you've got buses that will pass one another to try to maintain some form of balance. But unless you correct some of those underlying factual problems, you're not going to be able to provide a truly reliable service on the corridor. And that may be an acceptable answer. I'm not suggesting that it is or isn't. But the point is, is when we have a situation like this, where we have this obvious problem staring us in the face, we're trying to present an option to correct it.
I'm sensing that BRT is not the only solution to this problem.
Bingo. I would like to just say, we can sell this, and that's really, the staff really believes in this project. And what my associate here has said is that we want to be able to increase ridership. The past performance is the best indicator of what we expect. C-Trans has failed at that mission. While we've had a significant growth in the population of Clark County, C-Trans has lost ridership for the last fifteen years. We don't get additional ridership by saying we want additional ridership. We get better ridership by having more practical solutions and lower-cost fares. I also want to make the point that wheelchairs, I'm thankful for Mark Rohr back here because that's the best way to handle those that need service, and that is you go to their house, you pick them up at their house, you take them to their appointment, and you bring them back. And you don't expect them to come down to a busy corridor, wait with everybody else in the rain, out in the weather, and take the fifty-million-dollar system to be able to go someplace else that doesn't get them where they want to go. They see van service, that's what we ought to be able to, that's a better service for those that need it. And it'll go from their door, to their appointment, and back. And we could have had ten thousand trips of C-Van errands run door-to-door for the cost of what it costs just to study this concept this far. We get there by practice, not by words.
I've got a couple of things. I don't expect that you'll have these numbers on the top of your head. It would be interesting to know what the average cost per rider of a C-Van trip is.
About fifty-eight dollars, right?
Last number I heard was more like seventy-some.
The cost per C-Van passenger trip?
Right.
You're asking? And I have to confess ignorance because I've been away for a while and I just came back recently. The last number I saw was more like forty-three or forty-four dollars.
Okay.
That might be too low, and I, but we can get that.
That's a number I'd like to see. And another thing that would be especially interesting, off the top of my head, it seems that probably the bulk of the operational expense for C-Trans is fuel and personnel. It would be interesting to track a graph of fare increases versus the cost of fuel and the cost of personnel since two thousand. I suspect that the C-Van, that the C-Trans fare increases are well below what the PPI is, Producer Price Index, for the Portland Metro. And that's a fair representation, roughly speaking, of C-Vans, of C-Trans' costs. But specifically, I would think fuel and personnel are the biggest. And so it would be interesting to see that. And then the other question is, the bulk of the money for this Bus Rapid Transit would come from the Federal Transit New Starts Program, correct?
Small starts.
Small starts program, thank you. Would any of that money be available for the kinds of changes that Commissioner Mador proposes on the Fourth Plain Corridor? Or would that have to be paid for entirely by C-Trans?
It would have to be, first, it's not available through small starts. It would have to be paid for entirely through C-Trans, or there are occasional other grant opportunities that present themselves, and if it fit, one of those grant programs out there, we could potentially get revenue that way.
Great, thank you.
And I think I've taken more time than we planned. I just want to leave you with the encouragement to allow C-Trans to do, to finish our homework before we lobby you and we have each of the small cities give a green light to this program because we can do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, counsel, we have now a discussion item that's labeled C-Trans, Bus Rapid Transit. Dave, do you want to start us out?
The reason, thank you, Mayor, counsel. The reason that this item is on the agenda is in talking with Councilmember Freeman, there's a significant vote coming up at C-Trans next month on this project, and she is seeking your guidance as your representative on how she should approach that. As you know, and just as a sidebar, our interlocal agreement with CAMUS, because Councilmember Freeman represents both Waschugle and CAMUS, requires that she consult with the CAMUS Council on projects of significance or votes of significance. And so she'll be at the CAMUS Council, I think it's next week, to engage with the CAMUS Council. And they received a C-Trans presentation last week, right? So that's the context for this. The way that Councilmember Freeman and I had talked about this was for the council to have some discussion tonight, just discussion. And then you would have some time to think about that for a couple of weeks and come back at the next meeting, excuse me, to take a formal action, if that's what you want to do in terms of giving her guidance. You could certainly do that tonight, or you could have time to think about it and then get back with her in a couple of weeks. So that's how it's staged for you. It's a significant project.
Jennifer?
I have a quick question. So basically, you are going to be voting on whether or not to approve the use of the uncommitted cash investments of six-point-five million? Is that, or just the whole project itself? Or?
Correct.
It's the request going to the board in July would be for that local commitment.
The local commitment, which is the six-point-five million? Okay.
Which basically moves forward.
Yeah, it allows.
It's synonymous.
Yeah, you can't, you can't go forward with FTA until that happens.
If FTA turned it down, we wouldn't have spent the money, correct?
I'm not sure.
If we commit the six-and-a-half million, but then FTA turns down the project, we haven't spent that money, correct?
No, that's correct.
I brought up earlier about the vote in Waschugle on this, and it was actually phrased, should the Clark County Board of Commissioners approve a proposed resolution, such and such number, which opposes every Bus Rapid Transit project in Clark County unless it is first submitted, supported by a majority of the voters in a county-wide advisory vote of the people? And it, that matter passed in Waschugle, sixty-six percent to thirty-four percent.
I was going to say sixty-eight.
Yeah, and so my question is, is there a plan to submit this to the voters in Clark County if they elect to proceed with the Bus Rapid Transit?
On C-Trans, should I stand up here?
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
There are no current plans to submit anything new to C-Trans voters. C-Trans' history has been when we need revenue to be able to do projects or provide service, state law requires, and we always would go out and seek voter approval for increased revenue. The BRT project, as it's currently configured, consistent with the LPA that was adopted here a couple of years ago, does not require a sales tax increase to meet that local capital commitment. And because it saves operations and maintenance dollars, is not projected to cost more than the current service that we provide on the corridor.
So the answer is?
So the answer is no.
No, okay. And my comment about, well, okay, why?
Why?
Why? Why when the advisory vote of the entire county came back saying, yes, we want to vote and state our opinion to advance a BRT project? Sorry, I'm losing my voice.
No, that's fine. I guess I'd be at a loss. I mean, C-Trans doesn't, didn't do an advisory vote, the Board of County Commissioners elected an advisory vote.
But when you know, and you've seen the will of the people, even though you didn't put the question out to them and the commissioners did, when C-Trans knows that answer, why is C-Trans not willing to stop, pause, ask the people that are going to fund it, and then move forward if they say yes?
Has that question been asked at a board meeting?
Has that question been asked?
I don't want to put Scott on the spot. You're talking a policy question and an executive director question, not a staff question.
No, I appreciate that.
That is considerably.
Yes, then has been asked. And the answer is that C-Trans already went out to the voters before this advisory vote with a binding vote specifically to fund high-capacity transit, both for Light Rail and for this project. And the voters said no on that. The right thing for us to do, if we're going to represent the people, would be to go back out and say, since, if we respect what the people have said, and that's really what's in question here, well, I would certainly support, and I hope other board members would also certainly support, asking for permission, do you buy in? And certainly, I would support this if the people said so. The problem is that I don't serve as a one who knows better than the people. I'm serving as one who represents the people, and when they vote, to me, we ought to pay attention.
Thank you. And also, I'll point out that while it was a little closer in CAMUS, it was fifty-nine percent in CAMUS, I voted yes on this. And finally, I have to link it to my proposal we talked about in workshop on marijuana. I think this is something that, you know, I think it's a fair thing to do, to consult people we're supposed to represent. And that includes things like this, includes things we may have the most passionate feelings about. I want to know where our people stand.
I'm just curious, the federal funding, that's funded at this point, correct? I mean, not necessarily to us, but the agency has its funding, and we're applying for a piece of that, or it has not yet been funded?
Yeah, it's a great, it's a great question. The appropriations process is happening right now. The FTA dollars that are in their New Starts and Small Starts report specifically for this project, the thirty-nine million, that represents the president's budgeted request. So it's in the president's budget. The United States Senate just marked up their transportation bill that also has the full amount for this project in the Senate version. The House, I believe, will begin their markups here within the next, within the next few weeks. So the appropriations process has to happen. One clarifying point on that, say, for example, the project were to receive twenty-five million instead of thirty-nine million. What the FTA has done in every case in recent years is it could be twenty-five million in FY twenty-fifteen, they'd come back and do the fourteen million in FY twenty-sixteen. So we could be in a situation like that, but that thirty-nine-million-dollar federal funding amount represents the federal commitment. They may not be able to get it all in FY twenty-fifteen, although based on what the Senate's done here recently, it's looking very favorable to that regard. But that overall federal funding for FTA is subject to the appropriations process.
And then the second part of that question is, suppose we did delay this a year in the funding cycle? I mean, suppose we said, well, we need to go out for a vote, and so we can't make application. How long does that, where does that fit in the funding cycle?
Yeah, and I don't have a definitive answer for it. I apologize for that.
No, that's all right.
It's, the FTA has taken it on a case-by-case basis. There's been a number of significant projects across the country where that's arisen. And so it's, it really comes down to case-by-case, I believe.
If we can use the CRC as an example, we were told that September thirty was the drop-dead date for the Small Starts or the New Starts Program. And when that date came and went, we were told, well, we don't have a date. Do we have time to actually have a November vote on this? Yes, we do. This is for two thousand and fifteen funding? This is not for two thousand and fourteen funding? So is there time to do due process? If the CRC is an example, I would think we do.
When's the application date?
There are annual updates required by the FTA, and it's usually in the September timeframe.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
Can I just ask a quick question of my colleague, Councilmember Freeman? On the budget amendment committing the local match, I assume that's what we're talking about here for the vote that's coming up. How, if we hadn't given you, or would we not give you any guidance, how would you have voted?
I would have voted no because there's too many unanswered questions. And the fact that I see the wish, the, I see the request of the people through the advisory vote saying, we want to be asked, we want a voice in this, and we're not honoring that. C-Trans is ignoring it. Things like what Scott just mentioned, that if the federal government doesn't give us everything we ask for upfront, they would probably give us some this year, and then they might give us some the next year. I mean, who does business like that? Who builds multimillion-dollar projects? City government? Government does that. It's unnerving to me that you could move forward with a project when you don't have any guarantees. So the way I see things is, we haven't asked the people. The people have asked us to ask them, and we don't have any guarantees in funding.
Mayor? Hang on. Connie Jo, you had your question, you had your hand up earlier.
I sure did.
We'll come back to you.
Yep.
You know, you both, both you gentlemen presented yourself very well and were conversant with the facts and had, you know, very strong cases. And I can't possibly decide here who's right, for sure. So that leaves me with a, either we can put this off for a couple of weeks, and I can read some more and maybe watch the presentation of the workshop, which admittedly, I haven't looked at from two weeks ago online, to get more information to me, or I can let you know where I'm headed with this now. And that is, basically, when I look at, listen to both presentations, I can't, I can't decide between the two, so my default is going to be the will of the voters or my representative on the C-Trans board. So I'm not going to supplant their decision at this point.
Connie Jo sat through the meetings, and I agree with Brent. There's a lot of good information on both sides, and it's a difficult decision. But going back to what you said, how this affects Waschugle, we're just paying for it through our taxes. It's not going to make a bit of difference to what I consider poor bus service that we get out here. So I trust you to vote how you vote.
My hope would be, if it goes forward, that we continue to count on C-Trans to at least get some bus shelters out here for our folks so that they don't stand in the rain. We went through and did hundreds of thousands of dollars of sidewalks so they weren't standing in the mud, but they still don't have a dry spot, so just a little plea. Other items from counsel? Paul?
Are we going to go down the line of people that want to express yes or no right now?
Hold your hands up as you want to be recognized. I don't know where this is going to go, so it's the fun of those.
Anybody else want some input?
I just have two comments. One is that... One is that Councilmember Freeman is our representative. It is, when it comes down to it, it's up to her to make the decision. If I were to want to make the decision, I would agree with Councilman Boger that I would want two more weeks to think about it.
That's it.
So your final answer is maybe? No, we're not deciding on a vote right now anyways, but...
A minor correction to that, on, according to your intergovernmental agreement with Camas, same as with RTC on any major items, it is not the representative's vote, it is up to both councils to give them guidance, and then if that guidance isn't clear or is tied, then it is up to the representative. Your first order of business is to attempt to give them advice for your individual community. So, Jennifer?
Yes, I would have to agree with Councilmember Freeman and the fact that it is a $53.4 million project, and it's going to increase retail sales taxes and bus fares for people out here in our community with very little to show for it on our end, so I just don't see the value there. Plus, the fact that most of, it seems like, most of the, when we take a look at the $878,000 in annual savings, most of it is operating cost savings, $549,000 of it, and I have to assume a lot of that is drivers. Should we be cutting back on the buses?
Yeah, it's doing that service with six to seven buses instead of 11 buses today, in addition to the eight to 10 minutes travel time savings per trip.
I see.
If I can add that, it's basically breaking loop, the loop so that you can do six or seven buses along Fourth Lane to solve the problem.
Both of these...
Both of these solutions, either the no build or the, or should I say, the fix solution and the bus rapid transit, fix that, and they both can be, they both address that.
Okay, and I concur with Councilmember Shoemaker. Add buses, fix routes, but, I mean, public transportation should not be super big and super fancy if we're needing to watch our costs. It should be efficient, and it should be inexpensive for the folks who need it, and we should do our best to keep costs down. That's my opinion.
Dave?
This is not a new issue. We've been over and over and over this for the last several years. So I, at this point, I'm reminded of the guy who took the commands about firing. Ready, aim, 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 and he never pulled the trigger. You don't get results unless you pull the trigger. I'm looking for a vote tonight, and I'd be happy to make that motion.
What's the motion?
Bring this to a vote in order to provide guidance to our representative.
Can we just make a motion to provide guidance rather than just vote to have a vote?
Absolutely. I'd be happy to amend my motion...
I just made a list.
As you suggest.
And what's the guidance?
We have one, two, three, four, five, six.
I haven't heard a motion.
The motion is that we suggest to our representative to vote not to approve the BRT project.
Second?
At this time.
I've got a motion and a second to authorize a representative to vote no on the BRT issue. Any additional council discussion?
I took notes, and it was six to zero. No, to vote no.
Should we clarify?
We haven't taken a vote.
No, no, I'm talking about as we came down the line, the opinions were...
Committing local match.
I'm not sure.
Or no.
I'm not sure where Paul stands.
No.
What? I think Paul wants two more weeks, and actually, I wouldn't mind two more weeks, but I'll vote for this.
So again, I've got a motion and a second for Connie Jo, on behalf of Washtugle, to vote no on the BRT project. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Wait, I moved to table it for two weeks.
Fails for lack of a second. I'm just waiting to see if somebody does second it. Everybody likes to do things slowly.
I'm in a different time zone over here, so...
Understood.
That's why we...
I am not hearing a second. So I've got a motion and a second for Connie Jo to vote no on the BRT project. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
May I comment? Quickly.
Under council comments, yes. We're going to try and get through this as quickly as we can. Vote's been taken, we're done on that one. Public comments, are there anyone in the audience that would like to comment to council? You've heard too many comments, haven't you?
I would just say it's refreshing to see you deliberate in your open session here. That's just very refreshing.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, under Bear's report, I've got a number of items for you. First two of them are appointments for city boards. I have an appointment of Diane English to the Washtugle Cemetery Board I would ask your approval on.
Move, reapprove?
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any council discussion?
Any relation to...
Husband, wife.
The one flies, she had the bad judgment to marry me, but the other...
Okay, all right, that's what I thought.
So you have to abstain on this one, Diane?
Oh, see, I see, okay.
I would actually think that speaks well for intelligent precipitosity.
Any other questions? Got a motion and a second for approval of Diane English to the cemetery board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Then I also have a appointment of Kath Avlee, Elvy, to the Parks Board, and she is here this evening. Thank you for sticking with us.
Oh, my goodness. Hello.
Now you're going, now, before we go farther, do you still want me to leave this in here?
Yes, please.
Okay, just checking, just checking. I would ask for your consideration and your approval of Kath. So move.
Second.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to approve Kath to the Parks Board. Any council discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That does now fill all of the boards and commissions that we had openings for, with the small exception of our Civil Service Commission, of which we're looking for one applicant, preferably someone with law enforcement, retired law enforcement background. Some council members were able to make it to the Parks Foundation luncheon. Thank you very much for that. We had two, well, actually, three highlights to that. One, Suzanne Grover was given the Tributary Award, as you may remember from a couple, three weeks ago when they made that announcement to her here. Lloyd Halverson, our former interim city administrator, also picked up one of the awards from the foundation, and Suzanne collected, and I'm hoping duly handed off to the Finance Department a check for a little over $10,000 for a successful grant application for pickleball courts.
Yeah.
So we are down to, David, now, $10,000 roughly? $10,000, $13,000?
Lacking, is that what you're saying?
Other than what we've identified so far in the budget and in this grant.
We're all set for the project, but the council appropriated $20,000 specifically. The project came in at about 38. This gives us 10. We're still waiting on fundraising, so...
So we're within $10,000 of having it fully funded, done, knowing where it's coming from, but we're moving forward.
Right, and we don't have a problem to fund it, the small amount, as we discussed at the other meeting. So, yeah, so it was great news, good work by the staff, and we're grateful to the foundation.
So all count last Tuesday is a triple for us in the city of Washtugle. There is a flag retiring ceremony coming up this weekend on Saturday down at the Port Marina at 2:00. It's being done by a couple of the Boy Scout organizations, as well as the American Legion. They will have, they are taking flags that need to be retired. They have a permit from Southwest Washington Air Pollution Control to burn cotton ones, and they will properly bury the nylon ones, which they are not allowed to burn. So if anyone has flags they would like to retire, if you want to bring them down to City Hall, we'll certainly collect those and take those out on Saturday. That's at 2:00 at Marina Park. And my last item, just a heads up for council members on our July 4 celebration down at Marina Park as well. The port is already putting out their information. We've got some flyers going up as well, so that day starts at 4:00 in the afternoon on the 4th with the children's parade and goes through the fireworks a little after 10:00. Counsel? Brent?
Nothing.
Paul?
I just wanted to, I just wanted to add one more thing to the Parks Foundation that, yes, I was there, Joyce was there, Jennifer was there. Another Washtugle resident by the name of Vern Chanilak donated, I believe it was $15,000 toward the building, out of his own pocket, to the building of a viewpoint and sitting area along what's known as the Greenway Trail, which is actually in Camas, but it starts basically where the old bowling alley used to be and runs along the river and then crosses the river on a bridge that was recently completed by the city of Camas, and then there's another path that runs, paved path that runs along the opposite side of the river, the Columbia River side of the river. And I just wanted to give a shout out to Vern, that that was a wonderful thing that he did, and that along with that, he has been involved in building a peace garden in the backyard, let's call it, of St. Anne's Episcopal Church, which is at 24th and Main Street in Washtugle. And for people who might want a quiet place to meditate or commune with nature, I've already seen people out there with big, long telescopes looking at the birds. So it's, that's also something that Vern was deeply engaged in, and for good reason, is very proud of. We had a mosquito control board meeting. Mostly, what we did there is try to fix some of the procedural and, let's call them code problems that the state auditor's office complained about in the last audit. The thing that's very difficult here is that we have a very small budget, and our executive, our operations director, I like to say of him that he is so tight-fisted that if you give him a dollar bill, he'll squeeze it until George grins. And creating procedure which meets the state auditor's muster and still allows him to be a real skinflint is proving very difficult. So that's basically what's been going on there now for the past two meetings. The rest of it's really not very interesting. I was at, on this past Friday, I had an all-day board meeting at the Employee Benefits Trust of the Association of Washington Cities. The trust went from fully insured to self-insured effective January 1 this year, so we've kind of been holding our breath, how are we going to do on our projections? And it turns out that, so far, we're coming in within a few percentage points of our projections, so things are looking good, and the real reason to do this is that it creates an environment under which we can hold down, we really want to flatten the curve on how rapidly medical insurance rates are going up, and we think that this is, we held rates absolutely flat last year, and we think that we'll be able to come close to doing that this year, although it's, it seems likely there will be some increases. So that's always a fun meeting, and I ride Amtrak up and back, and that makes it even more fun. I don't have to sit behind a wheel. That's all, thank you.
I just want to say again, I was very proud of Washtugle at our luncheon. We were represented well.
Jennifer?
Yes, I don't have anything to add, thank you.
David?
Two things. Thanks very much for both the representatives' forum against this issue that came tonight and struggling through trying to educate it. At times, I know that you must have thrown up your hands and said, why don't they listen? Thank you. The other thing is, there's no Public Safety Committee meeting this month. It would normally be next Monday. We're not going to do that this month because we've got our two key staff from the fire and the police departments who won't make the meeting because they're gone, and so the next meeting will be in August, the 3rd Monday at noon at the Washtugle Police Station. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Connie Jo?
Well, I want to say thank you also to David Mador as our guest here tonight, and that Scott, you just showed up here because I know you want, you heard through the grapevine it was happening, and you were here to give some answers, and it's good, and I thank you for your professionalism. I thank you that, as an individual, you've dug in to learn and that you share your experience with us, because I can say that there's nobody on that Board of Directors that has gone to the degree that you have. That's an extra mile, and it's very much appreciated by me and, I believe, by the city council, because we were able to make a decision tonight with this, due to this discussion. And secondly, I'd like to thank my fellow council members. First of all, that you trusted the new kid. Wow. Maybe I should take that thank you back. Two and a half years of torture, torture.
You're not the new kid anymore.
I know, okay, so, I mean, this Monday night, we're here till 9:30. We started at 5:00, and then tomorrow night, we'll start at 5:00, and we'll go to 9:30 or 10:00, too. So it's, I'm very thankful that you trust me, that you ask questions of me. Please do, always ask questions, and if I don't know the answer, I know who to go to, and that's it. Thank you. Tomorrow night, come, come to C-Trans. It'll be a lot of fun.
Very briefly, with Karen Plinsky's resignation, we now are down one person on Finance Committee. And after conversing with Connie Jo, I would propose a motion that we temporarily appoint Councilmember Freeman to the Finance Committee. She will be leaving to go overseas. I think you said that...
California.
Oh, okay.
It's another country, actually.
But in any case, you'd be leaving, leaving the area the 26th?
Yes.
So this would be through the Monday preceding that, or through the 26th, actually. So I move that we appoint Connie Jo Freeman to the Finance Committee through the 26th of June.
Is there a reason that it's only through the 26th and not through the end of the year?
Because she didn't want to do that.
I'll be the advocate and ask why you don't appoint someone for the rest of the year.
Because nobody else wants to?
Well, okay. Technically, you don't need anybody, as long as there's two of you. It only takes two to sign the...
Right, but God forbid one of us should break an ankle or something.
And partly, too, we're going to be getting a new council member. Maybe this new person will have a motivation to do this position. If not, it's something that I could consider, once I've experienced it, find out what the commitment is, look at it up close. What?
Oh, second.
Oh, did you? Okay.
I've got a motion and a second to add Connie Jo to Finance Committee through June 26. Okay? Any council discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. With that, we are going to break for an executive session on pending litigation. No action to follow. Scott, how long do you think this is going to last? 10 minutes?
About 10.
We need a, we need a short, five-minute break.
Do we really?
I really need a five-minute break.
I need at least a couple minutes. Oh, I can go? Great. Scott tells me what that's, this is about.
Hey, let's be back in five minutes if we can, please.